Start by doing the pledge of allegiance, so if you could join me, I would appreciate it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Let me just introduce everybody. We've got our county administrator to my far left, then we have Commissioner Huxley, myself, Commissioner Gold, Commissioner Boyce, Council Huddle, and John Jesuit, our administrative assistant. So, before we get started, I'd like to kind of make a few amendments to the agenda so that we can move more smoothly through things. Council Huddle reminded me that we need to take public comments, which we will do right after we get started. And then, we're going to move five, which is the order authorizing signature authority for transfer Brookings Airport, up to, right after that, and then, right after that, will be item six, so that we can put all the port commissioner stuff at the end. So, we'll put the five, right after public comments, and then, six, right after that. So, could I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Chair, I'll move to approve as you've recommended the change.
Okay, do I have a second?
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Why wouldn't we put the, I think most of the audience here is interested in the port, why wouldn't, maybe you've already thought this through?
Yeah, actually, I have. The reason being is, we have to get the information straight over to the recorder, Renee Colon, right after, and then, those individuals who are chosen will be sworn in, over at the recorder's office.
So, you want them last? Okay, thank you, I'll second that motion.
But these two things that I'm putting ahead are very, very quick items.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so, we've got a second and a motion to make the amendments to the agenda. Do we have any further discussion? Call for the question?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so, next, we've got public comments. You'll have three minutes, or less, we hope, to speak. So, go ahead, and, I don't have any public comments, were there any turned in?
I don't think they probably even were, might be aware that that would be.
Was there any of the public that wanted to speak before we get started? Since there are none, we gave you your chance, what can I say? Okay, so then, we'll go to order authorizing signature authority to execute and transfer Brookings Airport hangar leases. Council Huddle?
Thanks, Madam Chair, and essentially, as you know, we're in the purchase and sale transfer agreement with the city of Brookings on the airport. And, part of that agreement is that we're going to transfer our leases over to them, and there's thirty some odd leases. And, just for expediency purposes, the board usually approves the leases on consent calendars, usually, so what we're just doing here is authorizing me, they're usually executed by the board, but we're authorizing me to execute those lease transfers, to allow us to close this thing without coming back to the board with thirty different items, so that's really the long and the short of it.
Okay, and we already authorized you to do the real estate?
Closing documents, yes, and so, we may come back with another one of these type of items, depending on what comes up.
Okay, so, do I have a motion to allow Council Huddle to sign for the transfer of the hangar leases?
Chair, I've moved to give Council Huddle signature authority on the hangar leases.
Second, Madam Chair.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the question?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next, we've got vehicle use agreement for Curry County and 4-H Extension Service, County Council.
Thank you, same item, so, we are the 4-H District Board, and OSU is a tenant, and does a lot of the administrative work, and we provide a vehicle, and so, this is the vehicle use agreement. And then, what it says, the real change, after we ran it by our insurance company, says when the vehicle's being operated on behalf of the district, which is us, our insurance will be primary. If OSU uses it, or if the borrower uses it, otherwise, their insurance is primary. And that was a provision, it's included on page thirty-seven of your packet, under insurance. So, that's really the long and the short of this, and that's just requesting approval of the agreement.
Okay, so, do we have a motion to approve the vehicle use agreement?
I would move to approve the vehicle usage agreement between the 4-H Extension Service District and the county, as noted in the provisions in the document.
Okay, second?
Second here, Madam Chair.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for the question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I told you guys it would be fast. Okay, now, we're going to get to the big meat of this, the election has been certified, just to let everybody know, that happened this morning. Well, that's not for us to do, I don't think.
Is there a document to that effect?
We've got a document.
I have it right here. Is there, is it anything to read, or what does it say, or how does, what, how, what kind of document is it?
She just dropped it off, I left it on my desk now. She just dropped it off and said it's been certified.
Okay, thanks.
So...
I think it had an official stamp and stuff on it, too.
Yeah, it, yeah, it's on my desk, I'll get it to the record.
Thanks.
Roy?
It'd be nice to hear you.
Yeah, you have to go up to the podium, Roy, because everybody wants to hear.
You can't be heard unless you're talking into a microphone.
Anyone that wants to speak, which is still, for anybody, if you go up and identify yourself, they're in front of the speakers there.
My name is Roy Davis, and I represent the Port of Brookings Harbor, and I was asking if there was some kind of a short summary that Clark could read to the public?
He's going to do that, he went to his office to get it, so, yeah. While he's gone, let me just tell you the process that we, as commissioners, agreed upon. What we're going to do is allow each of the candidates to get up, three minutes, give an introduction for themselves. We're not going to be questioning you, or putting you on the spot in any way. And then, we've got a sheet here, we're going to vote on the candidates that we think would be best for the port. And, then, I guess, Clark, our Administrator of Assistant, we'll pass our votes over to him, and then, he'll give you the numbers. And then, I think all of you know that we're going to be appointing two commissioners, so that there will be a quorum. And then, once there's a quorum with the port commissioners, then, those three individuals will appoint the other two. So, just because you're not chosen today, or if you're not chosen today, we can't choose all nine of you, obviously, but if you're not chosen, certainly, there is ample opportunity for the other two to be chosen. So, you're in a real bind here, but I'm hoping that we will end up doing what is in the best interest of the port, when it all comes down to it. Yes.
Just to clarify on that voting, it's basically going to be a rank voting ballot. So, in other words, if there were the nine candidates, which I believe there were, there may not be nine here present, but if there were nine, each commissioner would have one vote for up to nine, you know, but could not vote, could not give the number nine to more than one person, so that the highest rank would be nine. We would each have the opportunity to vote for one candidate at nine, one at eight, one at seven, and if we wished to go further, all the way down. But I think we pretty much agreed that we'll vote for the two top, you know, our top choices, and not go all the way down. And, that, each of us has a sheet, we'll hand that in to the Administrator. He'll tally them up, and that's, the top two totals will be the two new commissioners to join the port.
Okay, and then, I'll just read what happened on the final certification. On the recall of Jan Barbas, Port Commissioner, there were 2,175 votes, or sixty-eight point one-two percent, that voted yes, and thirty-one point eight-eight, or excuse me, 1,018 votes that voted no, or thirty-one point eight-eight percent. And then, for the recall of Angie Christian, there were 2,160 votes that voted yes, or sixty-seven point five-eight percent for yes on the recall, and 1,036 votes, or thirty-two point four-two percent, that voted no. Was that enough information? Okay. So, if you wanted to get a copy of this, you can get it from the recorder, I'm sure she'd give you a copy of that. Because it gives you more information than, you know, the original and all of that, so... Okay, I think we'll just go in order as to how is on the agenda here. We've got Leroy Blodgett first, is he here? Okay.
Thank you, my name's Leroy Blodgett, I live in Brookings, and I've lived there now for approximately eighteen years. So, I'm not a native to Brookings, but been there a while. I managed the city of Brookings for six years, I believe. I was twenty-five years in the city management. Also, on the coast, I managed the city of North Bend for a few years, and also, the city of Myrtle Creek. So, I've been around here since eighty-seven. And, I fished in the port for several years, I was on their budget committee for, I don't know, four or five years. Been involved with the port ever since I've been here, back when I was a city manager there. Collaborated with the port on several projects, and worked together quite well with them. I'd like to just offer my experience back to where they need to go, and give us some strategies and goals, and head off and try to meet them.
Okay.
That's all I've got.
Great, thank you. Okay, next, we have Russ Berkman.
Larry.
Did I miss someone?
Yeah, Larry, Larry Brocker.
Larry Brocker?
Oh, Larry Brocker, okay, he hasn't written like this. I was going to go down and call him. I guess we're going alphabetically.
Yes, whatever was in the packet.
Oh, I got you, okay.
Hi, my name is Larry Brocker, and I'm new to the area. I moved up here in January, and the reason why I moved to Brookings is because I fished this coast for about forty years, on and off. I started out in the post office, excuse me, I started out in the Air Force, back when I was eighteen, and retired twenty years later, after serving my country very honorably. I joined the post office and became a postmaster in three different cities, Sacramento, Ilwako, Washington, and I went up to Westport as well, in Washington, where I started fishing. I have a hundred-ton license, and I gave up my fishing career, basically speaking, because I'm getting older, and I needed a break. In this period of time, I worked with port commissioners, both in Ilwako, Washington, and Westport, Washington, in many, many adventures, one of which was my own, in building a bed and breakfast, working with the Corps of Engineers, working with port commissioners, port managers, and the state of Washington, which, let me tell you, was a pain. But, we got it done, and there was a lot of negotiations, and after two years, we started building, and it is still going very well. I moved to Brookings for one reason, and one reason only, and that's because I wanted my boat down here so I didn't have to cross that bar up in Ilwako and in Westport. And, they have a beautiful harbor here. Little did I know that it needs a lot of help. I'm retired, I can give twenty-four-seven to the community, and I want to build this port up so that we can be proud of it, as we are now, but even more so. I want to thank the board for listening to me, and I hope that whomever you choose, or whomever is appointed, looks to the future, because that's what we need to do. We need to look to the future, we need to find out what is best for the community, and best for this country. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, Russ Berkman. I'm not going to blow it this time.
Ah, sorry. My name's Russ Berkman, I own Pacific Ocean Harvesters, a fish market in the Port of Brookings. I have been a tenant of the port for the last four years. I also own two commercial vessels and sport fish. I was born and raised in Brookings, where I spent my childhood playing on the beautiful Manchuk River. I was raised in an entrepreneurial family. My father was a river guide here in Curry and Delnart Counties for the past thirty years. My parents installed in me my work ethics, my honesty, and my integrity, which I hope to carry on into my adult life. By no means am I a politician, but this, I feel, is my strong point. If I am appointed, I will strive to be a voice for the people, and not private agendas, because after all, our port belongs to the public. I want to thank you for taking the time to look at all the potential candidates, and may the final, may there finally be a brighter future on the near horizon for our beautiful port we all call home. Thank you.
Thank you. Wayne Ferretelli, did I say that right? Oh, Wes.
Okay, I am here to offer my expertise to the Port of Brookings Harbor, which I believe to be the heart of our community, as well as one of its main economic drivers. I have seen the port and what it can be, and I want to help it, bring it back to that relaxing family environment that I remember, but I also want to help it to grow into its full potential. A little bit about myself, I'm a very dependable, trustworthy, and caring person. I'm not only a hard worker, but I'll bring common sense with me to this position. My number one attribute is that I'm a team player. Now, what I am not, I am not a politician, I have no hidden agenda, this is not a stepping stone for me. I plan on running for no offices in the future. I belong to no special interest groups in regards to the port. I am here solely to help the Port of Brookings succeed. Besides my exhaustive education and training, I have prepared myself in the two mainline functions of port operations. The first being construction, I've done both residential and commercial construction and port setting. I've had, I've held a general, I hate public speaking. I have held a general Class B contractor's license for twenty-eight years, doing dock construction, gangway construction, and seawall construction. The second being maintenance in the marine environment, such as plumbing, electrical, and general overall marine maintenance. Why do I want to be a port commissioner? Because I truly care about the port. This is not in my notes, but I drove down there Mother's Day, nothing was going on, it upset me. I drove down there Memorial Day, nothing was going on. And, I, I don't, I think it's just so much more. Nothing would give me greater pleasure than to see this port be successful. The fishermen to be successful, the small businesses to be successful, to provide that welcoming environment to our families, the residents, the vistas, and the people that vacation here. This, the growth opportunity that this port has is unimaginable. The ability to set goals and work to achieve those goals for the success of the port are equally unimaginable, and very fulfilling to me. In my opinion, we need a strong grip of individuals to serve as commissioners, to oversee the success of the port, and not to micromanage the day-to-day operations of the port, but to insist, assist the employees in doing their job. If they are successful, the port will be successful. I have the ability to identify issues that must be addressed, and work closely with other board members to address these issues, and come up with an appropriate solution in a non-confrontational manner. Last but not least, the recognition of being a port commissioner. Nothing would give me greater pride than to watch the port succeed, knowing that I've had a hand in it, and helped implement that, living up to the responsibilities that you have placed on me and the public have placed on me. I am of the utmost belief that if we help all the entities of the port to succeed, the port itself will find success. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have Sharon Hartung.
Good afternoon, I'm Sharon Hartung, and I would like to thank the county commissioners for inviting me here today. I have lived and worked in the Brookings area since nineteen seventy-eight. I am a volunteer board member for the South Coast Fishermen's Association, an ODFNW educational aquatic trainer, and I am also on the budget committee for the Harbor Sanitary District. In September of 2016, I was interviewed and appointed to fill a vacant port commissioner position. I held this position until June of 2017, when I lost the election for the port commissioners by forty-eight votes to Mr. Martin. Since, since the election, I have kept current with the port difficulties and financial situations. And, excuse me, I'm a little nervous. And, anyway, and I have attended most of all the port commissioner meetings to keep current. I recently attended the final budget meeting for the port, and this budget will be approved by the commissioners that you appoint today. I believe I have a lot to offer as a port commissioner position. I have experience as a business owner, I have interfaced with employees and customers, I have worked in the commercial and the sport fishing industries. My past experience as a port commissioner should also be of an asset. The port has many different functions, besides being an important commercial and sport fishing port. It is landlord, operates RV park, it has fueling and boat docks, it is an employer, and it is also a tourist destination. A commissioner needs to have personal contact with all the users of the port. I prepared for my board meetings by trying to contact the people my decisions would affect, and their feedback by researching, so that I could make an informed decision. Some of the decisions that I made were not popular with all, but were what I felt was good decisions for the port and its users. Previously, I was a port commissioner with a group of commissioners that worked as a team to improve the port's financial situations and their infrastructure. The financial relations with the state were improving, and the decisions being made were in the best interest of the port and its users. I will be a team player without an agenda, and I will do my best to improve the port. And I would like to thank you for your consideration.
Thanks, Sharon.
You're welcome.
Okay, Richard Heap.
Good afternoon, I'm Richard Heap, and I've often been asked, since I applied for this position, why would I want to do this? I serve currently on four different boards and commissions, representing Oregon fishermen. I spend about eighty to eighty-five days a year, traveling to and attending meetings representing our community and fishing. And, none of that matters at all, we don't have access to the ocean. And, access to the ocean depends on ports primarily, and dredging secondarily. So, I have a very deep personal interest in the success of this port. I've made a commitment to our community, and I do like to do the best I can to help the port succeed. I have extensive experience in government, I worked for the state of Nevada for over thirty years. During that time, I interfaced with our Wildlife Commission for twelve years, wrote the handbook for the commission, so I'm well aware of what it takes to be a commissioner, and how to interface with both the public, staff, and fellow commissioners. So, I'd like to offer that, to help the port and help our community.
Thank you, Richard. Okay, next, we have Jacob Presser, is he here today?
Hello to everybody here, my name's Jake Presser. I moved from Fresno to here twenty years ago, I love the port. I have absolutely no qualifications that all the people in front of me have. But I can guarantee you, I will be there, I will give a hundred percent to the other people in the port. I make good, sound decisions. Basically, by taking the information and taking the paperwork on something, that I will analyze it first and see where we're going with it to make my decision. I won't just go in there and say, well, I kind of like that guy, he's voting for it. I'm just not that kind of guy. I believe in honesty, I believe in the Ten Commandments, I believe in our country, and I will give you a hundred and ten percent. That's it. And, thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. Ken Range.
My name's Ken Range, I live in Brookings, lived in Brookings since 2006. I've been coming to Brookings area since the early nineteen seventies, when my parents moved here. I've been a user of the port for part-time, until I moved here permanently. I have a recreational boat, I've done commercial boat inspections for the Coast Guard, as well as recreational boat inspections through the Coast Guard Auxiliary. I've been on a lot of boards and commissions, I'm currently on one with the state appointed by the governor. And, my interest in the port is seeing it get back to being what it's intended. That's an access to the ocean for both the commercial and the recreational boaters. And, right now, it looks to me like we have a major crisis, and we just added another hundred thousand dollars of debt to be paid off, and dealing with the debt and maintaining the access to the ocean are my priorities. You have my resume of all of the other assorted things that I've been doing, or have done. And, thank you for the opportunity to talk to you. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those at the moment.
We're not going to ask you any questions, but thank you so much.
Thank you.
Joe Spears, I got a call from him last night, he is out of town, had an appointment, out of town. So, now, commissioners, we need to come up with our rankings, and we'll pass them over to...
Does everybody have a...
Yeah. Okay, this is the hard part, because everybody's so qualified. So, please don't feel badly if you don't get it today out. I wish I could have all nine of you be in, yes.
I know in the workshop, I don't know that we agreed or disagreed, but it was brought up whether or not we would want to have any comments, or hear any comments from Roy Davis, who is the sole...
Would you like to make some comments about this whole?
...surviving commissioner, or not?
Yeah, that's fine. I wasn't sure whether he'd do it under public comments or not. He's our lone wolf right now.
I've been sitting on this board for twelve years now, and the nine applicants that have applied for these positions, it's a tough job, and I appreciate every single one of you for applying. And, there's, there's probably the most unbiased, non-agenda crowd that I've had to deal with. And, myself, I will sit on this board for the next year with you. And, if it's a team effort, I'll run again, and I'll sit beside you again. Several people mentioned team, team, and it is a team. And, if we all agree, there's been mention of ocean access, a very, very important, very important aspect. There's, the resumes, I've read them over and over and over and over. Some really great candidates, and it's a tougher job as you will ever put yourself into because of the general public, for whatever reason, our county commissioners, our city councilors, and then, there's the port board. Yeah, there's been close to some great combinations on the board to get to go somewhere. But I sure look forward to whoever, any of the nine of you are great. And, I wish everybody good luck today, because I'd hate to be the one to have to choose. I'm going to be part of choosing the second go-round. But, thanks for coming, it means a lot to show up, to talk to the county commissioners, let them see your face in three minutes. Good luck to each and every one of you. I look forward to serving with any of you.
Commissioner Boyce?
Roy, you said it perfectly well, this is pretty humbling to be sitting here and trying my best to understand and be aware of how critically important the port is to this county. And have nine people, as you well said, willing to volunteer their time, knowing it's a tough job, knowing they won't be compensated, except they're just willing to serve. And, I mean, I almost want to just do this. And I mean, I almost want to just do this, and I'm as serious as I can be, and I think half of you could be sitting in this chair just as well as me, if maybe not contribute more. So that is very humbling. It's a huge responsibility. I appreciate the opportunity. New day for the port, and it's also reminded me that this is a chance, and back the opportunity, we can all put our shoulders together and push forward and really make a difference. Just if, remember anything I said, which probably is rather insignificant, just that this is a new day. Roy, thank you again.
Okay.
And yeah, back to the resumes. My gosh, that was, I'd read them each three times, just...
Everyone was qualified, so I wish I had a magic wand and I could say there's gonna be 10 commissioners right now, but we have to choose two, unfortunately, yes.
Right, and the current commissioner did explain there will be another selection after this. The process is, I think, the port has five commissioners. The county commissioners only select enough commissioner, enough port commissioners until the port commissioner has a quorum to do its own business and do the further appointing. So even if the board of commissioners isn't, you're not in that selection process, there will be another process as the, yep. So again, this is just a phase of filling out the entire port commission board. So I did, so even if, you know, and I know that you commissioners are struggling, but just for you, if, if it turns out that, you know, a commissioner, a candidate isn't selected by you, there's still other opportunity for those candidates that you don't, that don't get selected by you. I just want to let you know, so.
That's right. We like them all, so. Do you need a calculator?
No. What I'm going to do is I have a tally sheet here. I also have a spreadsheet, so I don't have to add to my head to make sure it's done right. I'll transfer it to the tally sheet, and I'll have corp counsel review this. He'll in turn hand it back to the chair for the announcement.
I gotta tell you, this is the most formal appointments we've ever done, so we've appointed commissioners before where there were numbers who were missing, but this is really a unique situation. Roy?
Can I ask the county commissioners a question about their counsel?
About their counsel? You mean the county council?
Yeah, Mr. Huddle.
Yeah, you have a question for me? Fine with me.
Do you attend every county commission meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Is it, is it appropriate to ask if you are on a salaried contract?
I'm an employee of the county appointed by the board of commissioners.
Okay. Okay, so it's very economic for you to be at every meeting?
It's economical, probably for the county, right? The more they use me, the more value they get out of the money they pay me.
Absolutely.
So are you thinking in terms of getting a permanent counsel for the port?
I'm just asking a question. We got, we got a new board coming up here, and they might be sort of office to, less expenses for counseling.
I'm gonna tell you, you don't have the money right now.
I don't have the money, less expenses.
Okay.
So we'll just, we'll appreciate that suspense.
What we're hoping for, Roy, is to get a group of commissioners, port commissioners, that can work together for the best interest of the port. That's my goal.
I just have a personal question for Roy. Do you have a date set?
Do you want to stand up here?
Identify yourself and all that stuff.
Christopher Pash. I just wonder, Roy, do you guys already have a date set for the appointment of the next two, once this quorum is set, on the 15th? Okay, great. I like fast movement.
Well, I don't think you guys have a choice. Have you done any of your budget meetings yet?
Excuse me.
You have to go up here.
Right.
Or just making small talk.
Why don't you just stay up here? I don't, I would say you don't need to...
We have, our, our budget committee approved the budget. Now we're waiting for that to be brought before the new board and have the board oversee it and look at it, have any questions. That will be on the 19th board meeting regular...
At least you're well on your way.
Right, we'll have an open public hearing for the budget and the board. If that time wishes to vote to approve it, then they can.
Okay. The council says I'm not supposed to do small talk with you, so.
Well, it's just not on the agenda.
Okey-dokey. He has to keep us in line. That's part of county council's job.
Like I said.
Oh, we could take that. Probably won't.
I could tell him about the trap is a little area, but I won't. It's not on the agenda.
No, I think Clark, I think Clark's got the tally.
Okay, we've got the tally.
Is it math? I did, I'm sort of triggered, but I did a, my interpretation of this was equivalent to this, so.
Okay.
I made that interpretation, even though it's different.
All right.
So I just want you to go through and just verify.
Oh, okay. All righty.
Do you want a calculator?
We'll just see if I need one.
The math, the math is in the...
Yeah. And I'm just gonna verify that, well, let me, I'll verify them, I suppose, let me see. That's okay. Yeah, that's okay.
Do we need a drum roll or anything?
It's not on the agenda.
Okay, I know it's not on the agenda.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask the chair to make a point of order on these dranious comments, I think.
I'd be ruling against myself.
Okay, so, yeah, I've verified the tally. There's all the documents.
Okay, the first one was Richard Heap, and the second one was Ken Range. So those two will be our next commissioners that we're appointing, and then the port commissioner will have a chance to appoint the other two necessary.
Position four, position five, I need the posts.
Oh.
No, there's only two positions.
Only two positions.
It doesn't matter which position.
We're only appointing two.
Let me just say this, I talked to Renee Cohen this morning, and both of these positions will only be until 2019, and then all five positions are gonna be elected in 2019.
So, I'm sorry, JJ has a blank form here. What he's talking about is we, so if I could, we asked the port which positions were being appointed, and the port commissioner positions that their counsel told us were being appointed, JJ, are which ones?
Position four and position five.
Okay, so why don't we just make Richard Heap be number four?
Thank you.
And Ken Range will be number five. That would be Kenneth Range.
Thank you.
I just know him as Ken, so.
And then, JJ, you have that for the board to sign?
Right, you need Mr. Range to...
Yeah?
But that doesn't mean that some of you, the rest of you can't be appointed, so I think we've got all items of business taken care of, so we're going to adjourn this meeting, and thank you so much for coming.
You have to go to the first office this morning?
Oh, yes, those who are here need to go, or who were appointed, that you need to go to the court.
You need to sign that?
Oh, I need to sign.
And then you need to fill out those forms, right? Or put the names on those forms?
Yeah.
What about this certificate?